Okay, we're about to start, so we're going to do a sound test in the audience. Everybody good? Can you hear okay? Those of you in the back, a little bit louder. Let's see if we can pull it up. See if that helps. But then we have one of those screens. Is that better? Okay, very good. We have a number of people coming up to the podium today, so I just wanted to make sure that was good. So, last week we had some issues with static and before we started today, I just wanted to tell you, one, our two wonderful speakers, I reached out to them right after the meeting to make sure that we were sorry about the technical difficulties. One of the speakers, actually, his hospital's server crashed, which is why he first couldn't get on. And I'm still not sure why the static was causing such a problem, but we decided we would invite him to come back another time. So, I look forward to doing that. The other thing is, as we've gone back to hybrid meetings, this is much more complicated than it was me doing this at home from my dining room table. And especially because we're switching back and forth between locations. So here's what I need. Anybody who either has audiovisual expertise or skills, or anybody who wants to learn audiovisual expertise or skills. We need help. We need a team. As Nathan goes into his year, we need a team that can help manage. I do feel like we're going to continue to do hybrids for some time to come, if not for good, because some members have told us that they like it. If they can't get away from their desk, they can still participate and not have to drive across town and then come when they do have time. So, this may be just the way we continue to meet. And so, for those of you online, those of you here in the audience, anybody who's willing to learn or lend their skills, we can really use your help. All right. And today, we don't have a table, so I'm having to kind of play around here. And if those who are helping with the beginning of our meeting would come up. Actually, our prayer today is being done by Brian Jamison, and he is online. So, Brian?
All right, well, now bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this amazing group of individuals in this amazing Rotary Club. Thank you for the will you have placed in us to pursue difficult challenges before us. Thank you for the respect we show one another and for those around us and the world around us. Lord, continue to guide us to seek refuge in these challenges, to make our world better. Guide us as examples of how to love and honor one another and appreciate our differences. Help us to be your children today that you will be proud of tomorrow. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brian. And next, we have our pledge. And I believe Alan Johnson is online.
Yes.
Online. Great.
Pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then I believe David Kellerman is going to come up and do our milestone.
Good afternoon. Henry, happy birthday tomorrow. Where did he go? He was, there he is, back there. Henry, you, May 8th. Spouse's birthday. Ray Baron's wife, Beth, May 9th. Clark Thurman's wife, Linda Scarborough. Can't see the date there. Brian Jamison's wife, Kelly, on May the 12th. Aniversaries, we got Dennis and Maxine Pepin, 57 years. Where's Dennis at? Outstanding job. She kept you, huh? Congratulations. Denise and Travis White, 24 years. And club anniversaries, Chris Walker, one year, May 8th. Salute.
All right, Dennis, that's so impressive. Okay, we have an opportunity for anybody to introduce guests that they have brought with them. And if you're in the audience, if you can come up to the mic, that's great. If not, I'll repeat what you say. Karen, come on up. And George. And I'm going to move out of the way. I'm not going to math.
I would like to introduce Tina Tips. Tina, if you'll stand. Tina is the new manager at Cook Walden Davis Funeral Home. She is the new Jared King here. So I want you to please help me welcome Tina. She's a prospective member.
Also, I think we have Eric, Isaac Berman. Is that you, Isaac? Yep, stand up. Isaac Berman in the back has been proposed for membership. Next week, we're planning on doing the orientation for him and doing an induction. So, future member, Isaac, thank you for dropping in. Yep. And Bobby Corrigan, were you, are you here in person or online? Well, guess he couldn't make it. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to introduce my daughter, Jules Howard, who is visiting online from Fort Smith, Arkansas, where she is a Residence Hall Director. Welcome, Jules.
And do we have any visiting Rotarians online? All right, I don't see Carolyn today. And I know we have a visiting Rotarian who is here today for a special presentation, Rich K. No, this is, this is a joke, you all. Our past district governor, Jim Henry, is here with us today. And you may remember last week, when I was very flustered about our AV problems, I called Rich K. Jim Henry. So I told Jim that I was going to call him Rich K. today. But we're very glad that he is here and he's going to come up in a moment and do a presentation. All right, and I think actually that's where we are, Jim. So you can come on up. And I believe George is going to come with you and maybe Billy Ray. All right.
It's always an honor to be confused with Rich K. So I, I take no offense at all at that, Georgia Ann. And it's an honor to be here today. This is, uh, this is just wonderful that we're getting clubs back together and we're meeting together as Rotarians. And I welcome you all that are here and everybody that is, that is online. This club is one of the best in our district and has always been recognized for the service and the giving, the generosity that you have. So today, I've just got a whole bunch of hardware to hand out. And I've got your leadership from last Rotary year, President George, past President George, Judge Billy from, from your foundation chair from last year. Because I got so much stuff, I'm going to, I may need even Georgia Ann to come over here to handle some of this stuff. So, without further ado, we're going to get started. The first recognition, every year, the Rotary International passes out or acknowledges clubs that, that achieve a number of their goals and achieve a number of items. And they honor you by giving you what's called the Rotary Citation. For those longtime Rotarians, it used to be called the Presidential Citation. But it is a citation from the president of Rotary International, acknowledging that a club has done certain, has achieved certain goals and done certain items that are set forth to be done. Now, there is a minimum amount. It's pretty hard to even get the minimum, but they call it a minimum amount. But if you do that amount, then you get the Rotary Citation. If you go one step farther, you get what's called a distinguished Rotary Citation. And one step forward is, is a silver acknowledgement. Two steps forward is a gold acknowledgement. Three steps forward, which is the highest you can get, is a platinum acknowledgement. So it is my privilege and honor to present to the Rotary Club of Georgetown the Rotary Citation Platinum Distinguished Honor. You did the best you could do. I don't know if you guys online can see it good enough, but I'm going to give it a shot. I asked Billy, Judge, Judge Billy Ray to be up here because the, the other awards relate to your generosity for the, for the Rotary Foundation. Rotary Foundation acknowledges clubs that, that do some special things. And the first acknowledgement regards the contributions to the Polio Plus, the N Polio Now Campaign. Rotary International recognizes those clubs that give a minimum, and y'all beat the minimum, but they give a minimum of $1,500 to the, to the Polio Plus Fund of the Rotary Foundation. So to acknowledge that, you have a certificate, which acknowledges that the Rotary Club of Georgetown has achieved the goal of at least $1,500 given to the N Polio Now Campaign for Polio Plus. So Billy, I'm going to give you that one. So congratulations. The next one is a banner that's given out by the Rotary Foundation, called the Rotary Foundation Giving Banner. This banner is given to clubs that have $100, that average $100 per capita in giving. There is 100% participation of all members in the club. And every member of the club gave a minimum of $25 to one of the funds of the Rotary Foundation, whether it be Polio Plus, whether it be disaster, endowment, annual, whatever. So I'm going to present, as President George, the Rotary Foundation Giving Award for 2019-2020. Now, you know, you may think that, you know, 20, everybody, everybody participates, 25 bucks. Surely, everybody gets this award. I got to tell you, last Rotary year, there were over 36,000 clubs worldwide. 4,000 clubs worldwide got that award. You can do the math and see what, what high cotton you guys are in. The next one is a bigger award. Bigger in size. It's called the Every Rotarian Every Year, or E-Ray Award. This is awarded by the Rotary Foundation to clubs that once again have $100 per capita average of giving, that every member of the club has participated. And every member of the club gave a minimum of $25 to the Rotary Foundation Annual Fund. The annual fund is significant because the annual fund money, as most of you probably know, is the money that comes back to our district, that we can use every three years. We get money back from the contributions that the district made to the annual fund. We use that to fund our career in technology or vocational scholarships, our global grants, global scholarships. And more importantly, it funds your individual club's DAP grants, where you can do your own community projects as you deserve. So again, I am proud to present to the Rotary Club of Georgetown, the Rotary Foundation Every Rotarian Every Year Banner. Once again, 36,000, more than 36,000 clubs worldwide. Worldwide, 3,400 clubs got that award. So you can tell the high, I'm not a math guy, but you can tell the percentage that you're in. You're in a very high level. The last recognition banner that I want to give is, a long time ago, there's something called a sustaining member club. And Rotary used to give out a banner for that, but they stopped a few years ago. Although Rotary still keeps track of it. And I thought during my year, that doesn't make a lot of sense, that if clubs can achieve a sustaining member level, they ought to be recognized for that. So I created the District 5870 Sustaining Member Club Award. This is given to clubs that have 100% participation by all the members, and every member gave a minimum of $100 to the Rotary Foundation Annual Fund. So I'm pleased to present the first District 5870 Sustaining Member Award Banner to your club. Congratulations. And that is all of the club awards that I have. You guys can stay up here or you can go sit down. We got one more recognition to make. The District Service Award was created by the Rotary Foundation to recognize individual Rotarians whose efforts to serve humanity and work toward world understanding and peace through foundation programs. Our district has been presenting this award since Rotary Year 2011-2012. This award is presented to Rotarians, to our Rotarians in our district, who have exhibited outstanding service in program, in promoting the Rotary Foundation and its goal of world understanding and world peace. It is my honor and privilege to present the District 5870 District Service Award to Derek McGill. Derek, are you with us?
Uh, actually.
Say something. There he goes.
Yes.
You know, the reason Derek's not here is he's in Kuwait serving. Yeah, he's, he's in, but he's, he's in, I understand you're in Kuwait, serving the world like true Rotarians do. So again, Derek, I'm going to leave this with your president. She'll get it to you sometime, somehow. But once again, join me in congratulating Derek on his award. As I said, I am, I am so, so proud to be here with you guys. District 5870 is so proud of everything that you all accomplished, not only last year, but in all the preceding years. But more importantly, you ought to be so proud of yourself. So congratulations and thank you for having me.
Thank you, Jim. And one of the things I did want to say about Jim and mixing up Jim and Rich, both of them have done so much for District 5870. And what I learned last week, when I went up to apologize to Rich for not recalling his name, we started talking about Jim and many of the things that Jim has done for this district. And Jim, as you all know, as district governor, his theme was, you know, find your Rotary why. And I mentioned that very thing in our weekly update this week about really knowing what your Rotary why is. And the other thing I learned about him that I didn't know is each time that George Oliver reads that beautiful statement about membership, there remain know what I'm talking about, when George comes up and does an induction and reads that beautiful statement, Jim wrote that. So that's very cool. And I understand you also can do it by memory.
I've been doing that at my club for about 15 years.
Okay.
I was asked to do it, and it's very special to me, and I think it's special to the new members. So.
Well, thank you. It's special to us as well. So thank you. All right, real quick, we're going to do a couple of announcements and then we're going to move on. Kalahari is coming up. I thank you to everybody who is going, that wrote me an email and told me that you were. That's wonderful. Field of Honor was supposed to have a brainstorming meeting today after our meeting, but since we had a change in venue, the chamber is really going to be a better location for that. So we have moved that to Friday, May 21st, immediately following the regular meeting. I wanted to thank Allison. You know, it has been an interesting year. We really got a lot of good feedback about socializing on Zoom before our meetings and our breakout groups. People seem to have enjoyed that as a substitute, but we all know that getting together in person is a lot of fun. And Allison has got us back doing in-person social safely. We did this one outdoors on the patio at George's on the town and had a great group. And so, thanks to everybody who came. That was a lot of fun. Dennis, I think we talked about this. You want to go real quick? Nope. I told him we may be a little pressed for time today. So, but I think he, he may have some, some happy bucks that he wants to talk about.
Firstly, I appreciate you all staying the course with the protocol. Looks like we're all pretty well spaced today and we've only got one more week like this back here. So thanks for your efforts. And all of the clubs in the past that I belong to, it's always tradition to acknowledge birthdays and anniversaries with a small donation. It was cold finals where I was. At any rate, I'm going to start off today with $57 for our anniversary and looking forward to more happy dollars here. George? 64 for George. My God. He must be doing a lot of mortgages. All right. I see, Scott? Okay. Okay, anybody else out here? How about anybody? Oh, Jeanie's out there. She's got some. $5, okay. Hey, Chris? All right. Anybody in the Zoom crowd? They're all very silent up here. Is that Mike? Okay. Thank you all. See you next week.
Very much. Remember that. All of those happy dollars go to Polio Plus. So, thanks so much. We, we, those funds are growing this year because this is a happy group. All right, Tom, do you want to come up and introduce our guest? And I'm going to actually stop sharing and let you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Before I fully introduce Phil Rodriguez, I'd like to give you a couple of highlights from the Delta Sigma Phi fraternity preamble to the Constitution. That will kind of give you a flavor of the organization he'll be talking about. The Delta Sigma Phi declares and affirms the following principles. That the belief in God is essential to our welfare. That the loyalty to the constituted authority of our nation and our sub, in its subdivisions is the cardinal virtue of our brotherhood. That the sanctity of the home and the sacredness of the family bond, the heartstone of our enlightened civilization, and the chivalry of man towards woman shall be maintained and protected by us. Each brother of the fraternity shall exemplify those principles in order that the fraternity may grow and prosper with honor to itself and so that the world may ever be convinced of the sincerity of our purpose. Now, the person who is really in charge of that from the top down, if you will, is our speaker today. His name is Phil Rodriguez. He's the Executive Director of Delta Sigma Phi Fraternity and Foundation. He'll be speaking to us from the National Headquarters in Indianapolis, Indiana. Bill was initiated into Delta Sigma Phi in 2000, let me get it right, 2003, and he, at the Illinois State University, from which he later graduated. And he's been the Executive Director of Delta Sigma Phi since October of 2018. Previous to serving in that position, he was the Senior Executive for the Illinois Toll Highway Authority overseeing a $1.4 billion agency and its $15 billion Move Illinois program. No idea where they wanted to move Illinois to, but anyway. So he's previously worked in politics and in government. And in, in doing that, he has spoken at many, many Rotary luncheons. And I think that will become quite obvious when he shows his first slide as well. Phil Rodriguez was also served as the Deputy Chief of Staff and Senior Advisor to the Illinois Governor Bruce Rauner, overseeing all operations and public engagements. I also understand that he was in charge of the personal security. So, you know, let, let that sink in. Anyway, Phil is the 12th Executive Director of the organizations in its 119th year. So yes, Delta Sig is older than Rotary. Bill has served in many various capacities in the fraternity. He was president of his chapter. He was president of the Alumni Board of his chapter. He was president of the Chicagoland Alumni Association and various other committees and such as that. He and his wife live in Indianapolis. Like I say, that's where the National Headquarters is, where he works. His wife's name is Kami. She's a member of Zeta Tau Alpha. They have two children, Noel and Dennis. And it is my distinct pleasure to honor and intro, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce to you my brother in the Bond of Sphinx, Phil Rodriguez. Phil, take it away.
Thanks, Tom. And thank you for that very kind intro. That was too long. And so I appreciate you doing that and for inviting me here today. Tom, it's been just such a pleasure to continue to be a fraternity brother with you. And thank you for all that you continue to do for our organization. I have to tell you, I feel a little nervous now because the guy before me just came out with all these awards. Clearly, I'm in the presence of a remarkable group that is doing significant impact in your community. And before I get going, I just want to thank all of you for what you do. And that is just remarkable. The testament to this chapter of what you are, are putting out there into your community, the dedication to your mission and vision is remarkable. And so, as Tom alluded to, I had the privilege to attend many a Rotarian lunches all over Illinois in my previous career. And I know the significant impact that you all make and meeting the vision that you've shared with the world around us. And so, I just want to start by thanking you. I also took a note to Dennis, if I can, put me down for $25 for the happy bucks. Definitely want to give back to a community that's making such a significant impact. So mark me down. I'll reach out to Georgia Ann and Tom afterwards to see how I can make that donation. But I'm really grateful to be here with you all today. You know, I know that sometimes there's perspective of fraternity or whatever that might be, but I'm a genuine believer in association service and, and membership organizations. I believe that the world now more than ever needs powerful community organizations that are committed to making impacts and really creating a difference in the next generation of leaders. And so that's been my driving force. I know that your motto talks about service above others, service above self. My, my service all along has been, my mission is, how do I serve others? And I genuinely believe that in the fraternity space, that we can do that by creating the next generation of young men that have a vision to create a big impact in their communities. And so, my hope today was to spend a little bit of time with you, you know, 15 to 20 minutes, and then talking about the organizational value that we're thinking about specifically around the social justice issues that are occurring within our organization around the country. I know that's been a top line issue for you all as well. And so, to me, we learn by growing together and listening to one another and supporting one another and the ideas that are out there. And then we'll wrap up by any Q and A that you have for me. So, I'm going to go ahead and start sharing my screen. I want to make sure everyone's good. For those online, could you give me a thumbs up if you can see everything? Awesome. All right, well, we will go ahead and get started. And again, you know, my focus and my hope today is really to spend time with you, thinking about the next generation. How do we create leaders? What's impacting them? What that looks like? But before I do that, I like to start every meeting, literally every meeting I do for our board, on the foundation, the fraternity, or house incorporation, or with any group, I just talk a little bit about who we are. One, our mission is to build better men. So every meeting we start as a staff and with our boards, we talk about this mission. And we talk about, are we taking steps to meet that mission? Two, these are our values that have been in place since 1899, culture, harmony, and friendship. I'm going to talk about this a little bit later on, about the impact we've seen within DEI, within our organization. But for over 120 years, these values have been the same. What they mean to me is that we are creating a generation of leaders who can understand and impact and make a difference around the community for them. We've been switching a lot in terms of strategic conversations internally, thinking about what is our organizational values. I know all organizations, including Rotarians, talk about what is the value that we offer to you and to those around us. These are the four buckets that we really focus on for our undergraduate men, for our parents, for stakeholders in higher education, and really all those communities. These are the elements where we say that when a new member joins us, that we want to make sure that they thrive in each of these buckets, that they have the ability to create meaningful relationships. Again, now more than ever, individuals, particularly this generation, are screaming for authentic relationships. We know we want to get them engaged in their communities. That's where a lot of this DEI conversation is going to be a component throughout the rest of the presentation. But we want to be able to create a space where they can give back and learn to give back and to give of themselves to others. And so, we want to talk about the environment we create for individuals within our national organization. We know that going to college or whatever their academic pursuit is, that is a way to moving them up and growing and evolving as an individual. So we want to have the right mechanisms in place to support our members throughout the country. And we want to make sure they're prepared for what's next. We want them to walk into. We want them to walk into a Rotarian luncheon and learn from others and network with leaders like yourself and feel prepared and equipped to engage in those conversations and be a greater part of the community. But this is the organizational value that we offer to our members around us. When we talk about our strategic priorities as an organization, these are the three things we talk about all the time. We are constantly rethinking the membership and experience, the value that we provide to our members. We're thinking about the health and safety. How are we creating that space for them, both emotionally but also physical well-being? And then thinking about significant growth as an organization. How do we evolve? How do we create change? How do we continue to evolve in the space we're in and not become stagnant in the world around us? And so, we're consistently thinking around growth. Because of that, for over 120 years, Delta Sigma Phi has seen significant growth. Since 2005, we've actually seen 45% growth in our chapter rates across the country. And even in a COVID environment, we continue to thrive. And so, we're really proud of where we are today. We've got 110 chapters across the country. We've got over 5,700 undergraduate members and over 100,000 living alumni. And so, our organization continues to focus on how we can evolve and grow. And we know that a critical part of that is thinking about buckets of change that's out there, but staying true to our values. So, to pivot to a little bit of our conversation today, that's a little bit about Delta Sig to give you some context. But here are the things we've been working on internally that I think are reflective for all organizations, whether your fraternity, association, or Ontario, whatever that might be, is thinking about the impact that you create in the world. So, for the past year, while we've been managing the day-to-day issues that come up with COVID, as we all have, we've been working very hard behind the scenes with our boards, our volunteers, and our staff to think about the impact that's needed for the future. So, when we think about the elements of change, we put them in our guiding principles, our governance, our resources, and strategy. And so, for over 10 months, we've been digging in really deep on each of these elements about what that looks like. And DEI is a critical component of that because there's things that are coming out within the next generation that we've known for a long time too as a country, about how do we evolve and really rethink and grow and evolve to provide that value and impact for the world around us. So, today, I'm gonna focus the remainder of my presentation on these three buckets. The context, a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of social justice desires and evolve and evolution here within. So, what informs us as we think about this? What are our stakeholders telling us? What are we hearing? What occurred within the past year particularly? That's really brought this to the forefront of how we need to rethink and redeliver our services. Give a little personal history about Delta Sigma Phi. And then pivot to the future, about all the things that we're doing internally as an organization to make steps for the future as we think about this critical issue around social justice. So, let's start with a little bit of context. So, we run surveys almost every month with all of our members in different ways. We do two annual surveys, and then we do targeted analysis for all of our undergraduates on a regular basis and for our living alumni. We're trying to learn a lot of things as an organization, again, keeping our pulse to the ground in terms of what our members are telling us. But I want to pull back for a second, just say what's out there in the world. So, a quick Google search, and you can see 1,000 different things on Generation Z. It's almost overwhelming. We're constantly looking at Generation Z. We're constantly looking at Millennials, Gen Xers, and how we provide that value to those different generations. One thing that's shifted significantly over the past 18 months, and COVID-19 has exasperated, is really the top issue that's moving within Generation Z. Then Generation Z, social justice has become the number-one issue. It wasn't like that before. And now, it's really been elevated to the top. This is a generation that thinks very differently about this and thinks very positively about this, and is thinking about how they can create change now and has a desire within the space. So, that gives me a lot of optimism and excitement about the future generations that are committed to taking on such a necessary element of our country and the dialogue in our communities around us. So, this generation is really focused on the social justice issues at front. Now, when I dive in a little bit deeper, we want to say, okay, that's what we're seeing nationally. Any statistic that you look out there, Forbes, Deloitte, PWC, you see those similar elements? We wanted to see what Delta Sig said. What did our members say? Does it line up with that? So, we do a survey, and here are some points that I shared with our board just a couple of weeks ago about top-line things. What this slide in front of you essentially is stating like, here's what's really important to our members right now as we think about one of the best focus areas. But what I want to draw your attention to is, it was clear in all of our survey data that the incoming generation and our current members are very focused on racial equality and focused on how they can do a better job on their campus, how they can engage in this dialogue. And I'll have more slides on that in a little bit, but it is a number-one issue for our members. So, again, I wanted to know, there's a generational hub where, you know, Forbes did a survey of over 150,000 people, but what happened with my organization? Are we different? Are we not seeing this? Does that mean I have a bigger cultural issue I need to identify? And so, I was really proud to see that our members are focused on this element as well because we think it's critical as we continue to evolve. To give some context outside of what just our stakeholders are telling us, you all have seen this. And so, I'm a pretty authentic speaker, and I recognize that, you know, fraternity and sorority don't always get the best perspective. And this past year, we've seen this movement on abolish Greek life, where they've talked about, you know, what occurred within our communities, within fraternity, the history of fraternity and sorority, where we've seen ups and downs and have failed in many elements and have grown in many elements. But if you think about the context that's also elevated it within our industry, we have seen a significant impact in this abolish Greek life movement. So, the combination of, you know, talking about social justice, as you hear it from our stakeholders, we know as an organization that we needed to really focus on this and think about how to continue to evolve. So, I want to come back to this. As I think about that context, right? This is the context that you all face as Rotarians, that we face as a fraternity. All these elements are similar. These issues are amongst us in all of our membership organizations. When we come back to culture, harmony, and friendship, what you actually see on the screen are our two founding fathers. On the left, my left, so I think you're stage right, is Meyer Boskey, who is of Jewish descent, and Charles Tonzler, who is of the Christian faith. So, they came together in 1899 to celebrate coming from different walks of life. There was not a lot of other organizations that had different demographics, had different religions. They were actually all very siloed. These two came together and talked about how we wanted to create a fraternity for a lot of people from every diversity, walks, demographics, religion, to come together so they could grow into the man they were meant to become. And so, that was their focus. That's what they really were founded on. And that's been instilled in our culture as an organization. It has been with us from the beginning. But I also like to be really authentic about the ups and downs of our organization because I think it's right to contextualize our history to understand where we failed and where we've grown. As I mentioned, we were founded in 1899. But in 1914, our organization took steps to actually restrict members to only men of Christian faith. So, our founder alone, who shared with Charles Tonzler, they actually separated. And when I think about that now, it hurts my heart when I think about who we were as an organization and the things we were going through. This was very common in the space. As you look at the fraternity space and the history of other organizations and in sororities, we saw this time where people started to say, we're only gonna move to one religion, one ethnic class, whatever that might be. And it was a really difficult time. If you look at our history books, and I'm actually like Tom said, I'm in the library of our office and surrounded by esoteric documents. In the '50s, there was a significant push from our members at that time to continue to make changes, to end these practices. There was a really great board that came into place and started really throwing down the hammer at every convention, and this was it. So, in 1959, they put an end to racial religious discrimination policies. But we know that didn't everything. That didn't stop everything. We needed to continue to think about how we were meeting the components then on DEI issues, right? Before it became DEI is the buzzword. How are we opening up? So, Delta Sig was taking steps forward and trying to think about how are we looking at it from all equitable standpoint, not just from a race perspective or religion, but from those that might have not the same equitable issues? So, how can we support them? And you can see that 1984, how we became one of the first organizations that was continuing to try to take steps to welcoming all members from all walks of life. Really, over the past decade, we have really been focused on the governance, policies, and education training. We've tried to focus on how do we create that environment at a governance level as well because those policies and procedures that come in place also allow us to live them out in our values as a management team here, but also amongst all of our organization, that these are critical elements for us to move forward. In 2020, we created our first-ever DEI committee. And so, this is an ad hoc committee off our Board of Directors that next month will formally be adopted as a standing committee of our organization. I'm gonna share the steps that we've been taking here shortly, but we really wanted to double down our efforts and focus on how do we make the next evolution of Delta Sigma Phi? How do we take what we saw in 1959 and double it down with taking strides towards what is next? So, we created a committee of partners in higher education from all walks of life. They didn't have to be members of Delta Sigma Phi. We have undergraduates. We have alumni. We have vice presidents and students affairs. We have a variety of people from all walks. And then I also knew of stories from different equitable elements and what that looked like. And we wanted to focus on some really critical areas around this issue. So, the purpose statement, the clear objective for this group was what you can see on the screen in front of you. But really, when I introduced this committee back in August of last year, I said, look, y'all, our charge, our commitment is to dig in. We're gonna dig in really hard and have an honest conversation about where we are as an organization and where we need to improve. And so, it was a lot of work at first, and we said, okay, we've got to break this down a little bit further. So, we said we're gonna look at four main buckets, right? What are the buckets that can help us stay focused? One, organizational policy. What are the elements we can do around social justice reforms and issues that are meeting the needs of others that can live in our policy, that can live in our organizational motto? It can live in how we look at board members, but how do we look at all elements? We also knew, we didn't have a lot of data, and I'm gonna talk about this a little bit because it's helpful as we think about how we're growing our communities, making an impact, what Rotarians are doing, communities around them, who are in need. These are really critical elements, and we didn't have the right data, and I'll share in that a little bit. We also talked about the education engagement of our members. How do we make sure we're providing the right education and training to create the right internal values and culture to address this? It's not an easy subject matter. We know this. None of us are experts, and we need guidance from one another on how do we create that. And so, that is another bucket. And then the final one is really thinking about recruitment. Because for us, as an organization, no different than yours, as you're trying to welcome members into your organization, we want to make sure that we're training our recruiters, that we're training our members to think about this issue. How are they approaching people from different walks of life? That's what makes a phenomenal chapter, is when you get to dig in on those dialogues and create those meaningful relationships with people from all over the world, from all around different communities, from all different backgrounds and perspectives. That's what moves us forward. And so, we wanted to dig in on that as well. So, since August, you can see here, these are the things that we've been focused on, that we've been thinking about how do we come together, a lot of meetings or at any other point in time. And actually, some of the stuff I'm gonna show you next is gonna be shared with our organization this summer. And so, you're one of the first people to see it outside of our boards, but these are the first things that we're thinking about in terms of how we're gonna move forward. Now, the final bullet point on this slide tells you three surveys to our members. We did a lot of survey membership to get an idea of where people were at. And so, just some true context of what our members were telling us. Here are some elements that they were thinking about of what they wanted from the national organization to help on these issues. We had a lot of data that was really positive, that people felt like they were creating change, that they were digging into these issues, but they needed resources and guidance. So, I don't know what it's like for you all, or if this is a challenger conversation, but it's creating the right mantra and putting this dialogue out there and then engaging that dialogue to give the confidence level for our members to go out there and create the change as it relates to these elements. But here are some slides that we were seeing from our members. We literally had over 150 verbal responses and had over 700 members that participated in our survey. But it was clear, clear, clear that this generation is looking for change and is looking to be a part of an organization that wants to create change. They want to know as they start to narrow, that's what we're seeing statistically in organizations, is this generation is narrowing the amount of groups that they want to be a part of, and they want to make sure that the part of the groups that they are doing are creating impacts in the community around them. We believe that we can do that. Rotarians definitely can do that. And so, we want to make sure that we're creating that environment for them to thrive. So, there's gonna be a lot on the next couple of slides, but I'll do a lot of the, you know, wanted to draw your attention to critical elements. When we talked about organizational recommendations, one, we've never had a vision statement as it relates to DEI. You all do. You've got a statement on your website. You all talked about it, but we have not been in the space. We've got it in our policies, but not out there about our firm commitment to this, particularly giving the founding of our organization. So, we're actually gonna create a vision statement to put out there on where we're gonna continue to move and strive for as an organization. The other one is bullet point three. Again, I share with you just a brief history, but we're really gonna contextualize our history and take it to our membership. We're not gonna move the ball, if you will. We want people to understand the ups and downs of our organization. We want to be honest about it. I think the more that we can be honest about our organization and where we failed, where we evolved, where we grew, the greater the impact we can make about our further commitment to evolving and moving forward. And so, at our convention this year, we've got about anywhere from 600 to 800 people that come out, plus a lot of people that sign in online, and we're gonna talk about this. We're actually gonna incorporate it as well into our next spring carnation, which is our national magazine, where we're gonna really highlight the organizational history. And again, I think that authenticity is a must, and it's necessary to meet the next generation of leaders. When I talked about data earlier, it was almost overwhelming when we started our committee with our friends and colleagues who were willing to jump into this. We had no data. We didn't have anything that could inform us, really. So, as a membership organization, we had to capture the basics, but we couldn't capture critical data that people would want to share with us. So, now, what we have in policy through our, we use a Salesforce-based platform, is that if people ought to want to provide their information in, they can. But we want to start gathering information so we can feel informed, are we growing or not as it relates to some of these critical metrics? We want to understand about equity. Is it a barrier for members to join because of finances, because their perspective on fraternity is too much? How do we think about those elements and start capturing that data? And so, what we've done now is actually for the upcoming fiscal year, which starts in June for us, we've got a whole litany of surveys that will go out in very small doses to small groups to assess where we're at and to capture the long-term strategic growth of an organization and what we're doing. The other part is we do a lot of education programming. This year alone, we did about 10,000 touchpoints just in the digital space. And so, we're really passionate about education and training. And that's the crux of talking about these issues, right? Is creating the environment for our young members to learn and grow and feel that they have the space to gather the right information. So, what you see here is a whole litany of elements that we're gonna take in terms of how we're gonna push this into our educational training and programming. For the past five years, we've actually been testing on diversity training. And so, we have a list of six competencies, diversity being one of them, that we do pre- and post-testing work at all of our programming. But we're really gonna evolve this thought process and think about how do we incorporate this into the layers of training throughout their new member process and throughout becoming alumni. Every journey from a Rotarian, from when the first time I sit in the room with y'all, to Dennis, who is 57 years later, those are remarkable things. It's a different evolution. We know that too for our organization. We want to be able to meet them where they are. And the other part is recruitment. Again, we want to make sure we have the right resources in place so that the next generation is thinking about these critical elements. And so, if they don't have that, then the next generation, even if this one's committed, the ones behind them will fall behind. And so, we have to make sure that we've got the right planning in place through all of our programs that allow them to look at the DEI components that are out there and how to evolve them. Now, this is just the first set. We've got a lot more that we're gonna do in the coming year, but we also know that we want to take it in steps. We want to make sure that we have a long-term strategic goal that allows us to move forward, and that's gonna evolve over the coming months with this committee as it becomes a standing committee of our organization. But as I think about the progress that's seen, we're seeing it. Across the country, fraternities and sororities are rethinking and trying to make sure that we are a big impact on the communities around us. All of us, I've met so many of my peers in this industry, are committed to creating change, created, committed to creating the next generation of leaders who want to make a difference, just like you all do. And so, we're trying to take these paths where we learn from one another to think about how we grow and evolve as an organization. I wrote down, Brian, your opening prayer was beautiful, and one of the things that stood out to me was, pursue the challenges before us. And damn right, right? Like, this is a challenge that is before us, and people like Rotarians, and I believe fraternities and sororities and so many others, can come together and create the change that we need. So, I'm gonna wrap up here because I know I'm getting close to 2 o'clock, and I want to be respectful of everyone's lunch hour. But I'm happy to address any questions that you have. Happy to stay on afterwards for questions. I'll also put my email in the chat if you ever want to reach out. My favorite thing on the planet is to be in the service of others and to talk to others about great ideas, and I'd always be eager to connect with you.
So, Phil, let's, we will take a question. We don't have a ton of time, but thank you so very much. This is an important topic, and I, this, this, today's program was actually brought to us from this club's Racial Unity Committee, which, as you know, formed back last June and May and June. And so, they've brought a number of programs to us. Our district, 5870, has appointed a DEI position within the district. So, you'll be hearing more about this. And I think I saw on the chat that Ron Swain said, wow, what a great model. So, would anybody like to ask a question either here in the audience or online? Any questions?
Georgia Ann, I don't want to ask a question. I'd just like to add to and echo your appreciation to Phil, to Tom Howard, to the members of our Racial Unity Committee for embarking on this journey. And Phil was talking about the future leaders. And I think Rotary is thinking about its future in terms of membership. And wow, thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. And Phil, I'm, I'm, what are your Delta Sigma Phi colors?
We're green.
Green, I thought, I thought I saw that it was green. So one of our traditions in this club is to say thank you to our presenter. And the way we do that is we, if you were here, we would have you sign a children's book that goes to one of the local elementarys. I wish the title were green, but it's blue. So this children's book will have your name in it and will go to one of our local elementary schools. So thank you very much.
No, the pleasure is mine. And truly, I just want to, again, all that you all are doing, all the awards that were just presented is a testament to each of you. And I genuinely believe, I mean, we're all in this life together, right? And so the only way through is by coming together and celebrating and thinking about how that moves forward. And so thank you for staying engaged in your communities. I know it's been a hard year, but I am about a couple of weeks away from being able to get back on flights. And so my hope is you'll have me again next time. I can come join you in person and join at the lunch. And I'd love to come spend time with you all.
We would love that too. And we look forward to that and thank you very, very much. Okay, we've got, you're getting applause from. So one piece of assurance to everybody here in, at the Palace Theater. We did have a little moment when the power went out because I didn't have the power cord and plugged in. So this is recorded, so you can go back and watch the part that you missed. It also means that my slideshow that I had pulled up, I'm not sure I can get back to it. So what we're going to do here is I'm going to say, are there any announcements for the good of Rotary? And I know that we have Billy Ray is going to come up and make a couple of announcements. Please watch your calendar. We are going to be here at the Palace next week again. And then we return to the chamber for the next two weeks. This is a, it's going to be a challenge. The church isn't quite ready for us to come back. We're working on that timing. And so we're just going to try to create the best and most consistent spaces we can for our club to work until we can return to the church. So I'm going to invite Billy Ray to come up and make a couple of announcements. And anybody else? I know Ron Swain, I think you had one. So if you would be prepared to do that. And Billy Ray, everybody who comes up, watch this board.
Thank you, Georgia. I have three things for you. The first one is happy news. The second one is sad news. And the third one is wisdom. The first is that our neighboring club in Temple is celebrating an anniversary. They'll be celebrating it on the 22nd. And I just want to ask any of you, if you want to guess which anniversary it is, the Temple Club. That's correct, 100. Our club was formed in 1962. So Temple Club got out there way ahead of us. Watch on Monday for a, an announcement from Georgia Ann with details. And I would encourage you, if you're able, to go up there and help them celebrate that 100th anniversary. Jim, do you have anything on that? Okay, all right. The second is a sad bit of news. A dear friend of mine, Bill Bryce, past district governor, the most serene man I think I've ever known, a good man, passed away. And his memorial service will be on the 15th at 11:00 AM at St. Helen's Catholic Church. And on behalf of his son, Doug, who's a good friend of mine, you all are invited to attend that service. He had been in declining health for a considerable period of time, but he is, he is no longer amongst us. And the third item is a bit of wisdom. And it is what we call the moment for peace.[1561.83]